Say me just here, yeah. Good evening. Today is Tuesday, September 8th, 2020. I call the village board meeting order. With a clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Zarnik.
Here.
Trustee Feiter.
Here.
Trustee Frankie.
Here.
Trustee Listner.
Here.
Trustee Pracknell.
Here.
Trustee Schmidt.
Here.
All board members are present tonight. Next, we're gonna do the pledge allegiance. We have no indication. Everyone, please stand. The flag's to my right. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. We now move on to the approval of the minutes of August 11th, 2020.
And make a motion. We approve the minutes of August 11th, 2020. And dispense with the reading.
Second.
Motion by trustee Zarnik, a second by trustee Listner. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Let the record show you an ass approval. Move on to mayor and board of trustees' report. Got some issues to go through tonight, and I apologize in advance. But it's been five weeks since our last board meeting, but we're back to normal. Starting after, started this week, we are back to our normal schedule, which means two meetings in September, two meetings in October, then we do our usual one in November, one in December. So we're kinda getting back to our normal schedule. We're still doing our social distancing, still practicing all the safeness with that, but we're trying to get a little bit back to normalcy. On the mayor's report, a few items. I know trustee Feiter was there, myself, and Chief Walsh went out to see Ivan, the Bulgarian consulate general. He's leaving. We went on August 13th. He's going back to Bulgaria. Actually said he was going into politics. He mentioned he's gonna run for office. So he's going back. He actually had a longer term than he only would get. What, he like 10 years, was it? Chuck?
He's been in the United States 15, five in Washington and...
10 years.
Ten, yeah.
Yeah, so 15 years, which is very long for this position and that. So obviously he was doing a great job, moved on. Also, we've been talking for a while about looking at rear yard drainage. We're looking at front yard sidewalk drainage issues, and we're looking at street condition, long-term, and all of that. And we're putting together, matter of fact, tonight, on the consent agenda is our next phase, which is a front sidewalk drainage issue on the front side of a house that's gonna be studied. And once that's all done, we're gonna be putting together a comprehensive package that we're gonna be bringing to the board prior to the first year, that's gonna set this village up for roads, rear yard drainage, front yard drainage, front yard sidewalk. All that will be set up for a long time. So we are working on it. Obviously got a little derailed for a while there with the COVID going on, but now we're back on track and look forward to making that presentation to the community after the new year. And again, this kinda ties into our 2025 plan, long-term infrastructure project improvements for the community. Also, on August 20th, you may remember her name, Kalen On. She was one of the young people that did a rally protest here in Elk Grove back a few months ago. She came to meet with us again. Go over a few issues she's talking about. I know Chief Walsh was there, and Mr. Rommel and I were there, and we appreciate the chance to meet with her. And give that young girl credit. She's really standing on top of things, staying involved. And the nice thing to see is she's got the right attitude when addressing issues that are coming up. And what I mean by that is she's trying to work on this in a positive way. Asking questions, looking for maybe change and stuff. And it's quite a pleasure to see a young girl who's only a junior in high school to have that kind of foresight and her thinking. Makes you feel very good about the future with young people like that. So we're excited about that. Then on August 27th, we had, where's Chief Michael? Back there. We had a kind of a disappointing fire presentation. We thought we had a new way of helping extinguish fires in a quick manner, whether it's fire hydrants or sprinklers or hoses. Didn't quite work out the way we thought, did it, Chief? Anyone that ever watches that show, American Pickers, you notice when either Frank or Mike get excited, they go into some place, they find these glass balls. They have fire retardant chemicals in there that at one time, years and years ago, many years ago, you throw to put out extinguish fires. The problem is, the chemical they used was not good for your health. So they kinda went by the wayside, which they should've. Well, they came out with a new kind of version of that that we thought was gonna be good. So the chief put on a demonstration over at the new station on Fargo, and I would say they didn't quite measure up to what we expected, did they, Chief? So the bottom line is this: one, don't have a fire start with. Two, sprinklers are unbelievably effective, quick, and really reduce the amount of damage. And of course, our guys are, of course, the best. So, but they can't be there for a while sometimes. So, but I appreciate the department always looking for new ways, new ideas, and who knows? Maybe they'll make improvements on it, and we'll see what happens on that. So that went very well. So with that said, I don't wanna make poor Donato sit up there. Did I swear him in first?
Would be nice.
Fine, fine.
So now he sees that the mayor does really have a heart. That's how my heart surgeon, no one truly knows it. Now Donato will. So, Donato, why don't you join me up there? My friend, thank you for coming up again. You know, unfortunately, over the past several meetings, we've had to talk about the passing of people that have served this community a long time, from Jim Petry, Jack Clays, Jim Fay, the old superintendent of 59, and now we lost a longtime community member, Larry Dorr. Passed away, and our prayers and hearts go out to Paula, his wife, and his family. He was on the zoning board for a long time, offered a lot to it, and you know, he's gonna be well missed. So you know, Larry's always gonna be in our hearts. We're not gonna forget what he's done for the community. And with that said, we had an opening then on our zoning board of appeals. And Donato here submitted actually an application over almost two and a half years ago, February of 19. So a year and a half ago. He submitted an application, wanted to get involved. And I don't mean to embarrass you, but I've seen a lot of applications. And very good people out there, but Donato, I gotta tell you, that was one of the most impressive applications, and I think the board is in agreement, that we have seen in a long time, if not forever. Very involved in the military, at General's Office, major?
Yes.
A major, still in the military, lawyer, very involved in many areas, very impressive. And he moved to the village about three and a half, four years ago. He has one child. I'll let him explain his family a little bit, but he wants to get involved, and we're very excited about that. So you know, tonight I'm gonna swear him in on the zoning board. I'm gonna let him have an opportunity to introduce himself to the community and all that, but I wanna thank you. It's hard for us to get younger people sometimes involved in the community, and I'm glad to see a young family man wants to be involved. We appreciate that. So with that said, if you raise your right hand and repeat after me, I state your name.
I, Donato Latrofa.
Have been appointed to the position of?
I've been appointed to the position of?
Zoning Board of Appeals.
Zoning Board of Appeals.
In the Village of Elk Grove Village.
In the Village of Elk Grove Village.
In the Counties of Cookin, DuPage.
In the Counties of Cookin, DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I support the Constitution of our states.
I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I faithfully discharge.
And I faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of.
The duties of the office of.
Zoning Board of Appeals.
The Zoning Board of Appeals.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thanks, sir.
Mayor members, my name is Donato Latrofa. I moved to this village in 2016, right after my wife and I made the decision to separate from active-duty service in the Air Force. It was a tough decision. My family's from Glendale Heights, just down the road. We decided to come back home because this is where we wanted to start our family, and of all the places that we looked, Elk Grove was the one that we liked the best. The school districts are phenomenal. We know that the village has a history of strong leadership, taking care of its people, taking care of its community. So it's something that we really wanted to do. When I first came back, my goal was to go into public service, kinda transition from the military into government service, but those jobs weren't forthcoming, so I had to kinda grind through the law firm sort of life for a while. But I was fortunate enough to get a position working for the government again. And because of that, I'm able to not have to worry about living life in six-minute increments. So now my wife and I are able to concentrate on our family. I have a young daughter. She's 17 months. Eleanora, she's sleeping right now. That's why they're not here. She had to go to bed. But we're really looking forward to, I've been looking forward to joining the board, and my wife and I are looking forward to continuing to give back to the community and kinda help it continue to grow as our daughter joins it. So thank you so much, sir.
Thank you. Again, well, because I've had a heart issue, we give out dark chocolates to help you. So they're actually the chocolate logo of the village. So I'll give you a couple packs to bring home.
Thank you.
We thank you for, family, tell your wife, we appreciate allowing you to serve the community. Because we tell people all the time, it's our volunteer service from zoning board, plant commission, police and fire commission, all the different commissions that do the grunt work to help make this village better. And without you folks out there doing that, we wouldn't have the town we have. So on behalf of the village, we thank you for donating your time. We look forward to working you, and we know that is the best.
Thanks, sir.
Take care, buddy. Thank you. Give him a hand again. Now, Donato, if you don't want the staff to stay, you don't have to. I know you've got family, all that. It's up to you. So I just let you know, you don't have to do that if you don't want to. It's your call.
Run. If you don't mind, I'll observe for a little bit.
Sure, by all means. Thank you. He just wants to hear the mayor's report, then he's gonna be...
Run, run.
You're gonna chase him away.
Nah, nah, he's gonna be happy then.
Retire.
Some items I'd like to go through tonight, if I could. Unfortunately, to start the night off, but got to, they're back. Yep, our unknown friends are back again. They're still using the same permit number. No one's taking credit for these pieces, but unfortunately, they're back here in the community. And this is the second one. They actually did one back in July. They got a couple billboards up, so they're back. And again, this is found the same pattern we've seen now for two years. It all started because this board did the right thing and said no to some people. Wasn't good for the village, and they seemed not to have liked it. And they're back again. If you remember, this started about two years ago when a gentleman ran a candidate for our board. Kind of a new candidate. He's only lived in the village a year. No one knew much about him. And the gentleman actually talked to a neighboring mayor, who told me this straight up, that this gentleman mentioned that this new candidate was gonna run as trustee two years ago and be the next mayor this election coming up. And as everyone knows in this village, we didn't know much about him, obviously. That candidate turned out to be a gentleman that was arrested not once, but twice recently for altercation with women. Actually, his last arrest involved him punching a woman in the face. And that's not the only actions he's had in the past. So they started off trying to come back with those kind of issues the last election. Luckily, residents saw better. Were not even closely elected, and we saw how that turned out. So we see the kind of choice of people that they like, I guess, being involved in this community. Don't worry, Donato, that's not the kind of people we get involved in this community, trust me. The one thing I'm finding kinda disheartening with this stuff coming back, and it's gonna keep coming, folks. It's not done. It's hard to have to talk about it again, after two years of talking about it. The one thing that really bothers me is, for some reason, these folks do not like women. They pick on women. This last piece, obviously, was picking on Kitty Weiner, a successful businesswoman, volunteer in the community Rotary Club, Character Accounts Coalition. The one before that picked on Rosanna DeFrenzo, very successful businessperson here with realty, with the restaurant business, also volunteer Rotary Club here in Elk Grove. Before that, they were picking on Lee Firstine. Lee's a part-time employee, but also involved with the Rotary Club. Very successful, good person here. And Laura Ball, a teacher at one of our local schools here in Elk Grove, a good family person, whole life in this area of Elk Grove, growing up and all that. So for some reason, these people don't like women, which I think is beyond belief that they have that attitude and how they treat them. But hopefully someday we'll find out who they are. And if you remember, it didn't stop. They went on, remember, the retroactive term limit they came out with next? Same kind of pieces came out, attacking the CARES program, attacking individuals again, how terrible everything's going. And the bottom line is, they're trying to divide this community. The great thing about that retroactive term limit they're trying to push through was actually how they united this community like never before. I have never seen this community come together and unite like it did. And I think the ultimate showing of that was the night that obviously the Supreme Court ruled unanimously 6-0, that the question they had was illegal. Shows what kind of law firm they had backing them, that they fought for an illegal question that was unanimously shot down by the Supreme Court, even though that law firm kept saying, "Oh, it's gonna win in the Supreme Court, it'll win in the Supreme Court." It didn't happen. But that town hall meeting we had that night in February, the question was already tossed by the ballot, often by the Supreme Court. We had a town hall meeting, and we still had hundreds and hundreds of people show up. This room was filled. Our overflow rooms were filled. The hallway out there was filled. People came like never before. Why? To show the unity within this community. And that was impressive. That really all touched, I think, everyone in this community and made you very, made you feel very good about it. And the amazing thing was, early voting started shortly after that. And anyone that early votes here, which is great that we have it, Lori does a great job putting it out here for the community area, was, I was talking to one of the judges that had been there from the beginning. He's been there all the time, knows who I am. And he goes, "Mayor, you're giving us a lot of work during the..." I said, "What are you talking about? What are we giving you a lot of work?" He goes, "I can't tell you how many people are coming in, voting on that referendum." I said, "Yeah, but the referendum has been tossed by the Supreme Court." Goes, "It's question's still on the bell. They still wanna vote no." There was still coming an overwhelming number to vote no, and they still wanted the vote to be registered. That made me very proud. That's how strong this community came together like never before, and it really showed what's going on. Well, and again, like I just pointed out, sadly, they're back again. We had about a six-month break from February till July, and now they're back to a second piece they mailed out, two billboards out there, and same stuff. Nothing new. They're just regurgitating the stuff they talked about before, which is all, nothing true about it. They're making up, they're slandering things, they're twisting words, just trying to divide a community again. But that, I'm not so worried about. Because I think this community's gonna stand up again and say, "Uh-uh. We're too good of a community to go through that." Now be ready. They're doing this on purpose, timing-wise. Why? Petitions get circulated starting in a couple weeks. They're obviously looking to set up another candidate like they did for that one trustee race. You saw the quality of candidate they ran that time, arrested twice, once for punching a woman in the face. Can imagine the kind of candidates they're gonna try to run this time. But this community's above that. This community's smart, and this community doesn't forget. They did it before. The community shot it down. They'll do it again. And I got faith. I apologize, as your mayor, I apologize if you have to go through this crap again. But like it did before, it'll make us stronger. It'll make us better. And it's happening, but we're gonna beat it again. And these people, I mean, it's almost a joke, some stuff they do. You know, we've talked about how they love this Facebook stuff, and they go on there and do stuff. You know, we got a town clown out there. You know, a town clown a few months ago attacked our police, our fine police department for being racist. Calling our police department racist. Now, I have to say, I think he apologized for that because it was proven it wasn't. Then once he do, he attacks our fire department. We've got very low COVID numbers for our community. We should be proud of that. No, they attacked it, saying our firemen weren't making calls to help COVID people. They don't want it to disinfect because of it, when the absolute opposite was happening. Our fire department, to their credit, took an extra ambulance, set it up in such a way that it could be sanitized real quickly, and they could go out and cause consistently to help those that were in need. So instead of praising our fire department for thinking outside the box, doing something unique to help our people, he attacked them, saying that they're not making calls because they don't wanna get COVID people coming in to make our numbers look bad. It wasn't done. It wasn't done. He attacked in our public works guys for not making the first responders' cars safe to use. Saying that they weren't being treated, treated right, weren't being maintained right. They were dangerous. Nothing could've been further from the truth. I explained our whole history, how we take care of them. Every month, all the work being done, being attacked then. Oh, he's not done, folks. He's not done. Now, he's going after our seniors. "We should replace the aging population with new, high-quality residents." And I quote, I quote, "The town clown now wants all the seniors out of this village." The seniors in this village built this village. A lot of the seniors in this village, I grew up with their kids in this village. They were the foundation of Elk Grove from back in the 50s and 60s. They now should be replaced with high-quality people. Well, I'm sorry, but our seniors are probably the highest-quality people I've ever met before. He wants them out. We're not done, though. No, of course not. "We have more low-paid service workers, and we need to encourage higher-wage earners." You know which group sounds better to me? So now our blue-collar workers, our union people, all working, working hard for us in this community, need to go so we get higher-wage earners in this town. So we're now attacking seniors. We're now attacking our service workers out there. These are the kind of people, all working together, all supporting each other. The town clown is a big supporter of that guy that punched the woman in the face, running for trustee. He's a big supporter of that. That's what's going on here, folks. So pay attention like you did before. Stay together. We'll get through this. We will get through this. We will defeat this, and we'll be better off for it. Now, with all that unfortunate going on, this village is doing great. We're in great shape financially. We're strong as a community. We're going through tough times with this COVID, but we're doing well that way. Anyone that's driving around the town, one thing you'll find kinda fun, I've been going over by the new tech park quite a bit because of the work Microsoft is doing over there, I'll talk about in a minute. You should see the amount of people walking their trail over that tech park, around the little lake area. Went over there on Sunday, a couple Sundays ago, and a family actually had one of those 10-by-10 tents set up by that little patio area they have toward Higgins Road, and they had a kind of family get-together. They were social distancing, so they were doing good, but they actually were set up there for an afternoon. Here in the middle of the biggest business park in North America, you got families coming together in a beautiful greenway area by the tech park. Made you happy. People riding their bikes on it, walking around it, walking their dogs. Really, that place is truly something special. I gotta give Brennan all the credit in the world for what Mike Brennan did, George, putting that together, encompassing into the community. You know, that's one of the reasons why Microsoft told me they chose Elk Grove, was because the community feel we have, even the heart of the biggest business park in North America. And that was a lot of good stuff. I know Pat's gonna be talking about the clothing recycling going on in a few minutes. The other thing, just talking about the business park. Our business park just became one of the top three industrial parks in the United States. Elk Grove Business Park is ranked in the top three in the United States Industrial Parks. Just recently named, and that was named by the Business Facilities Magazine, a well-respected trade magazine that looks at manufacturing, looks at all those type of businesses. It was ranked in the top three in this country. Another reason to be proud about Elk Grove, and another reason why businesses choose to be in Elk Grove, and why we're doing so well over there. Speaking about the business park, tech park, Microsoft, anyone driven over by that tech park, walked the path over there, whatever, or see a lot of earth movement going on. That's Microsoft. They're starting to build and get prepared for the buildings that are coming. We've talked about it. It's now happening, folks. They put in plans, the earth movement going, they're doing that. They'll be building their buildings soon. And remember, Microsoft could've put this location anywhere they wanted to, and they've told me this, but they chose Elk Grove. And they chose Elk Grove because the kind of community we have, the kind of business park we have. That talks volumes about this community, and we're excited about them choosing that. We're excited about them choosing Elk Grove. Matter of fact, Mr. Rowan and I met with their outreach gentleman about two weeks ago, and Microsoft's already looking how they can become a better neighbor in the community. They're looking how they can work with Elk Grove to find ways to help with diversity issues, help with young students learning technology trades for the future jobs. They wanna look at ways they can give back to Elk Grove to make this village even better. So Microsoft has not put in one ounce of concrete yet. They haven't built one building yet, and they're already doing outreaches with the village, how they can work with their schools and work with other groups, civic groups here in Elk Grove to be good partners with them. That's a quality company. And remember, Microsoft's gonna invest billions, with a B, billions of dollars in that tech park over there. Billions. It's really gonna be an improvement and a nice addition to Elk Grove, and we're excited about that. And can't wait for that. I know Pat's also gonna talk about the bike update, so I'll let him handle that in a little while. Also, Pat, I know you're gonna talk about the recycling that we just had, but I'd like to, if I could, read you a letter before you get to that. You should be proud as chairman of the recycling committee. This came to us just a few August 29th. "Dear Mr. Mayor, I'm writing to compliment those who worked or volunteered for the electronics recycling and paper shredding event this morning. Although the line was very long, it was kept moving steadily due to the good work of everyone involved. This event was a great help to me and other village residents. Regard, Charles Klemensky." So, Pat, congratulations. I know as chairman of the committee, a lot of work you guys went through to get that done, and it's well appreciated by the community. I've sent a letter letting you know how much you appreciate the work you did. So thank you on that. Also, more good news about the village. Things are starting to fill up. Remember we talked about over by the shopping center, town center here, that by the Planet Fitness, a PPE store is opening up. They're taking over, I think, what, about 55,000 square feet? About 55,000 square feet. There'll be a sales tax produce for the community. Matter of fact, we have a thing going on agenda tonight. They're coming. We're also announcing tonight that one additional space there is gonna be taken up by Dollar Tree. Dollar Tree's coming over there also, and that leaves just one space next to Dollar Tree. There's some discussion going on, hopefully in the very near future, re-announcing that being filled. So that shopping center's getting pretty filled up again, and more and more of our shopping centers went. I know trustee Zarnik was there and others, a couple ribbon cuttings over on the west side there. So we're seeing more and more of the, a lot of mayors I talked to are struggling. We're starting to see more and more of our shopping center areas getting filled up. So we're glad to see that. We're excited to see that, and obviously, we're looking forward to that being done. We've got a couple centers that the owners are a little slow with, but hopefully they'll be getting theirs filled up soon. We don't know why they are, but keep our fingers crossed on that. The other good news, on the agenda tonight, we're gonna send back to the plant commission. Remember the Love Fueling Station that's coming to Elk Grove over at Pratt and Bussey? That's the one that heard about Elk Grove through the Bahamas Bowl. Chad Bruner was watching the game in Oklahoma City, checked out Elk Grove, decided to locate the new prototype location here in Elk Grove. They got the approval from the MWRD. IDOT will give their final approval if they have to modify some parking stalls to handle the right end, right out onto Bussey. And that'll go back to plant commission early October. Once it goes to the plant commission, it's approved by the board, then Love Fueling Station will start their construction. And remember, we talked about that. That's kind of a unique thing, that truly are out-of-the-box advertising the Love, I mean, the Bahamas Bowl paid back in dividends. That'll generate between 15 and 20 million dollars to this village in sales tax revenue over the 20-year lease they're signing. 15 to 20 million dollars, all because of a football game. So that was a nice return for this community. We're excited about it, and it should be moving ahead pretty quickly. Hopefully, we get that kind of results back from our partnership with the American Athletes and the track and field, and wrestling, and triathlon with the upcoming Olympics. So that turned out well. We're excited about that, too. Census numbers. You may have some people knocking at your doors soon, but not too many people knocking doors because Elk Grove, I wanna thank you and commend you. Our return in response to the census has been unbelievable. By the mail-in, the original thing that came to was the mail-in, we had over 84% return. 84% return. That just dwarfs what we had 10 years ago. We were under 82%. With home visits right now starting, remember, they only have to pick up... With home visits right now starting, remember, they only have to pick up sixty percent. We're now over ninety percent response. That is phenomenal numbers for the community, and phenomenal numbers in comparison to other communities. Uh, and we talked about this, the census is so important. That gets us money from the state, the federal government, the county. It's based on population, demographics, and all that. So please, if you're part of that, less than ten percent haven't responded, respond back. The more response you get, the better off the village will be for the next ten years. But Elk Grove, thank you. That is truly a great response and turnout, and we can't thank you enough for helping the community. Uh, next, Chief Walsh, I wanna commend you. Our police department, we've talked about for the past couple months, our police department's CLIA certified, which is the highest certification, the highest ranking you can get as a police department. Less than five percent of all police departments in this country, less than five percent are CLIA certified. Our department's been CLIA certified for over twenty years, and it's got re-accredited. So Chuck, nice job. Kudos to you guys. And remember, what's real important, especially at this time, what's going on in this country, that's important, because CLIA certification means your department is on the cutting edge of doing things. You hear departments talk about, "Well, we gotta learn about these, the, um, escalation, doing de-escalation training. Gotta start that. It's gotta be..." Our department's done that a long time ago. We've done that. We're ahead of the curve on that. Race relations. We've had training going on for several years on that. That's not something new to Elk Grove. We're ahead of the curve on that one. So when the town clown brought up that thing about, uh, us being a race, we gave him all the numbers. That's why he ate his words and apologized. He's made it up. It was inaccurate, because our guys are ahead of the curve on that stuff. So, again, Chuck, on behalf of this community, congratulations. Thank you. Um, our police do a great job. In Elk Grove, Chuck, we will always back the blue. That I can guarantee you. A hundred and twenty percent. So, good job. Keep it up. Thank you on that. Last but not least, we're talking about the coronavirus. The village is still doing very well. Knock on wood. Now, hit this. No village employee has come down with coronavirus as of yet. Out of three hundred and twenty-four employees, not one. Could it happen? Yes. But think about it. It's now been seven months, and we've done great. That's because our leadership, from the department heads up to our manager, um, have been on the front edge. You know, I know people say, "Well, why do we have five public works trucks?" They were separating so we could stay safe. Chief Michael did. We had the, uh, special ambulance for COVID patients. Why? It protects the patient, but also protects our guys. Ahead of the curve. We're proud of how this village is run. We're proud of how we handle things. We started ahead of the curve to avoid problems, and it's showing off, and congratulations on that. But we still gotta keep, gotta still be vigilant, folks. Distancing, wearing the mask. You even see me wearing the mask. You know, even though I passed my coronavirus test a couple weeks or so ago, we're still being careful and, um, you know, staying ahead of the curve on that stuff, so we're gonna keep doing that. But Elk Grove, keep the faith. We're getting through this. We got through, after nine eleven, got through the Great Recession. We're gonna get through this together again. Just keep it going. And I know people are asking a lot of questions about two big events coming up. Young people are already asking me, "What about Halloween, Mayor? What about Halloween?" And of course, a lot of people are asking about the tree lighting. We are gonna find, if possible, if possible, ways to keep Halloween and the tree lighting going. Give us time to work on this. We're already having some discussions, health experts, monks, people. See how we can do it. We wanna try to get somewhat back to normalcy, so bear with us. I think on Halloween, we'll have some announcement by our next board meeting. Uh, we think we may have ideas, and then the tree lighting, hopefully, over the next, uh, month, we should have some answers on that. Obviously, we're not gonna be able to concert like we had before. Uh, they're not happening, but we're gonna find some way to make this happen. We're gonna work on it. So hang in there, and we'll make sure we get that going. Last but not least, I'd like to make an announcement, uh, tonight if I could. Um, over the past year or so, probably a couple of years, um, I myself have been doing a lot of thinking. I know for several years, I've been saying twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five. That's not only our plan of revitalizing things we got going on in Elk Grove, but also, uh, one change may happen with this board. I've been mayor now almost twenty-four years, and I've seen one fly in a flash, so I thought about that. And, um, and I know I wasn't alone. I know some of the trustees had some long thoughts and all this. But I tell you this. When this crap started hitting again, it made my decision very simple. And, um, this village is too important. This village has too much going for it um, to allow this kind of stuff to carry on. And it's not the only thing. Let's be honest. We've had the coronavirus. That's something, no one could ever expect a pandemic to come out like it did. A hundred, a hundred and two years since the last one, something like that. And there's been some economic impact, no question about it, and stuff. But the more I thought about it, the more I talked to the board members, but other people and stuff like this, and talking to other mayors, actually. Now, it's more important than ever before, at least in the sixty-five-year history of this village, it's more important than ever before that we have strong, experienced leadership to get through this time. It truly is. It truly is. Think about it. It's the leadership sitting up here on this board that got us through nine eleven. Remember the impact that came after nine eleven, economically and other ways? The Great Recession that happened just twelve years ago? It, that's not easy, but we got through that, and we got through it stronger and better because of it. Um, and now we got the great pandemic. And with that experience, and with how we got through it, um, it's, it's important. I truly believe that for the village's future and welfare. And I'm telling you, we're not done with the pandemic. We don't know what's coming this winter and next spring. A lot of things can still change. A lot of things still can happen to everybody. So, you know, we gotta be prepared financially, and the village has to be prepared physically. When I talk physically, I mean with equipment, with manpower, and everything to keep going. We did it after nine eleven. We did it through the Great Recession. Remember, financially, through the Great Recession, we didn't raise property taxes in the general fund. We haven't raised them for almost fourteen years. We got through the Great Recession without going out to the taxpayers and picking their pockets. That's the worst time to do it. But we did it because this board has worked well together. We have thought, and we've always thought, long-term. And we thought long-term financially. Because you're not always gonna have good days. You can have some bad days. Not only gonna be sunny, it's gonna rain. So you prepare yourself for the rainy days, and you put yourself in position to get through it stronger and better. And we've done that. We've proven that, and we're proud of what we've done here. So again, this is not the time to have a leadership that maybe looked at tax increases. We're not gonna do that. We're holding the line on that. We're holding line on taxes. We're holding line to make sure we still deliver our services. And then we've done that. We've got new facilities up and operational. We got new equipment. We're gonna make sure we can still provide what you deserve and what you need to make sure you have a good community. And so with that, we're gonna make sure we keep going. If you remember during the Great Recession, we were one of the few towns, we built the new village hall during the Great Recession. During the Great Recession, we built the most expensive public works project in the history of the village, over thirty million dollars. We did it, and it made sense. Why? We got the work for about forty cents on the dollar. People were looking for work, but we were in the financial position. We could do it. And we did. That's because we were prepared. If you look around this town right now, look at all the projects that are going on. Road projects, water main projects, sewer projects. We're going. We're doing things. We're in the financial position. We're prepared. We're getting through this pandemic financially. We're getting through it. Think about it. What other town out there during the Great Pandemic had a coronavirus leaf package? Elk Grove, almost three million dollars we were able to give back to this community. Residents got two-hundred-dollar rebates on the water bills. Even renters got it. Condo owners, town homeowners, single-family homeowners got it. Two-hundred-dollar credit. We heard from a lot of you. It was tough out there. We were able to give a little bit to help you through it. We're proud of that, but we couldn't have done that if we weren't in that financial position to do that. Same thing to the business license owners, to the residents in particular. They were the hardest hit. We gave them not only the business license, but their liquor license, the video gaming license they had one. We helped them. That was thousands of dollars to them. They were greatly appreciative of it. So, we're in position to do it. That happens because of good, strong, experienced leadership got us through that time. We're excited about it. But, you know, it wasn't just that. I mean, think about it. The green movement that's out there, people talk about. There's one village hall in this entire state that is LEED-certified gold. That's Green Initiative. Only one. Elk Grove Village. We didn't do that recently. We've been on the green movement. That was back in two thousand nine. We're not Johnny Come Lately once again, like with our police department, our fire department. We're ahead of the curve again. That's what experience does for you. That's what people that work together can get accomplished. We're proud of that. Look at our community events. Couldn't do it this year, but you gotta admit, in July, Elk Grove is the place to be. That's not from me. That's from the Daily Herald. We put on concerts like no one else does. We draw tens of thousands of people, our residents, our business people, our friends, our neighbors, our family members. Elk Grove's the place to be on Tuesday nights. Why? It brings a community together. We do that with our tree lighting ceremony. No one does a tree lighting ceremony like us. We have fireworks. We have concerts. We have community coming together. Again, that makes a community stronger, so when we go through tough times, whether it's this kind of crap or a pandemic or others, we're united because we work together, we stay together. That means a lot. You know what's funny? When you look at that stuff, and all that stuff? We do that with the lowest combined property tax rate in all Northwest Cook County. We do all this stuff, all the work going on, all that stuff. We got the lowest property tax rate in Northwest Cook County. Trust me, these businesses come to Elk Grove while we're doing so well, they know that. They know it. Not only they come into the biggest business park, not only now they come into one of the best industrial parks in the country, they also come to one that's most affordable to be at. That means a lot. We're proud of it. Just getting rid of the vehicle stickers a couple of years ago to help out the residents. Seniors are happy because it's a pain in the ass they say, I'm sorry, a pain to take the stickers on and off. You know, everyone else, that puts extra money in their pocket for their cars. You know, it's a way to give back to the community and make it better. And again, we do that because we stay updated, we stay on top of things. That doesn't happen easily. It comes from people that understand government, they understand how government works, understand how government gets things done. So again, we gotta stay strong, get through everything we face. We gotta stay united. And if we do, Elk Grove always wins. We're gonna win again. So, at the end of that, that is why tonight I'm announcing I will run again for reelection as mayor of Elk Grove. It's been the greatest honor you can give any hometown boy in his life. I've worked my tail off for you. I'll continue to do so every day when I wake up, and it's the greatest pleasure I have to give back to Elk Grove Village, that so many have done before me to make it a better community. For my parents being one of the first involved, all the way to Donato here stepping up with a young family himself now. So, I'm happy to do it. I'm counting on, hopefully, you appreciate what we did. I'm looking forward to the upcoming election. And, uh, I'll be curious to see what, um, what unknown people try to put up. Because, um, if they put it like they did before, we're gonna make sure that doesn't happen. So with that said, uh, that concludes, uh, the mayor's report. I'm gonna, I know there's three trustees coming up for election, so the boards concurrent before I go for your reports, I'm gonna reach out to them first. I'll start with our senior trustee that'll be coming up, trustee Factor.
Yes, um, Mayor Johnson. Um, I'd like to announce tonight that I will be running for reelection. This was not an easy decision, as Mayor Johnson says, it was difficult for him. It was very, very difficult for me. Uh, I've had to talk to my wife, and that was the most difficult in the process, trying to convince her to let me run again. And, uh, after long discussions, she knows how happy it makes me to be part of this great board and all the things that we've been doing all these years. Uh, and I wanna keep on working to do that. I'm very proud to be part of this group. And I have unfinished business that I want to keep on working with to try to get done and keep going in this village. For instance, we started with Chief Walsh this Bulgarian friendship program. We wanna see where that goes. When the pandemic is over with, I think that that will continue on, just as our sister city program with Italy will. Recycling, that's always been such a big deal for me personally, and I'll be talking about it later on in the meeting. But I'd like to see that that is continued to be pushed. The bike program in Elk Grove, I've tried to help the bike people as much as I could. They actually gave me an award a year ago, uh, for my work with the bike community um, in Elk Grove Village, and I wanna keep that up. They're good people, and I'll talk about them again in just a minute. Uh, I work with our tourist agency, Meet Chicago Northwest. I'm on their executive board, and they have taken a horrendous hit with this pandemic, with hotels and restaurants devastated. So, so I wanna continue to help them and then help Elk Grove at the same time. The one organization that's been dear to dear, uh, to me has been the Community Character Coalition. And I wanna continue to work with the Community Character Coalition. As a trustee, I've been able to do things for them that I might not have been able to do as not, as not being a trustee. So I think it's really been an asset to them, and I've been a president for two years of that organization. I'm now the past president, and I am a member of their executive committee, and I like working with them. They're good people, good organization. We haven't been able to do a lot of our things, again, because of the pandemic. That has had such a devastating effect on so many things. So yes, uh, I do declare that I will be running in this reelection, and I am so thankful to the people of Elk Grove Village who have given me this wonderful opportunity to be part of Elk Grove all this time. I have some other things in my mayor's report, or in my trustee's report.
We'll get to it.
Okay. You wanna go to the others then?
Trustee Puckman.
Thank you. After much thought and many, many, many discussions with my family, I have decided to run for another term as village trustee in Elk Grove Village. It has been an honor to serve our community for the past twenty-three and a half years. I am proud of where we are as a village. We are truly the exceptional community, and I am committed to, if reelected, helping guide us through these very difficult times with the knowledge and experience that I have gained. I've lived in Elk Grove since nineteen fifty-six and truly love our community. I hope to be able to serve this village for another four years with your help and support. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Puckman. Trustee Jeffrey Charles Frankie, who's no longer the rookie.
I'm not?
No. Trustee Schmidt.
Oh, yeah. Who's that guy? We're so far away, I can't even see that far. Okay, well, I'm gonna go by the seat of my pants, which is normal around here, so, uh, I, um, I thought about this long and hard, and, uh, people who know me know that, uh, I was debating on whether to run again or not. Not because I don't love the job and, uh, love this village, but only, uh, I think we need to get the village ready for like twenty-thirty. Um, I know the mayor talked about twenty-twenty-five, and I think we all kinda looked at that as a date uh, when we should, uh, pretty much hand the reins over to people, or at least get a whole new aspect of, uh, thoughts. And, um, I was really, really leaning, I was fifty-fifty, but, uh, a few weeks ago, when that flyer hit everybody's doors, uh, it just infuriated me that, um, these outside people that don't care about this town are trying to take it over and, uh, and, uh, change things, not for the better, but just for their own purposes, uh, maybe making more money or something. They don't, they don't care. Um, I've been here for sixty-one years. I've been involved in the village for twenty-two. I love this town. I'm not going anywhere. But, um, if, as the mayor would know sometimes, when I argue with him, I love him, but we, uh, we argue about stuff, but, um, we all think about the same thing, about what's best for this town. but we all think about the same thing, about what's best for this town. So I wasn't going to even make this announcement tonight, but I am going to run again. I am going to run for one more term, I make that statement here now. I think by the time we get through this, we need to get some people trained to understand how government works. Obviously, we don't want people to have to think the same, but basically understand how government runs. And I would just like to make sure that people are here for the right reason, that they're here for the village of Elk Grove, for the people of Elk Grove, not for just certain things. So I am going to run, I'm going to fight. I think it's a privilege that the people let me do this job for the last thirteen years, and I hope that they give me the privilege to do it for four more. I liked working with everyone here, I've learned from everyone, especially even Jim Petrie, taught me a lot. But my job now is to try to help people learn more about the village so they can step in. And I think we've all done a great job and went through some bad times, and now things are still good, even with what's going on here in the country. So I hope to leave it for the next people to make it better and not go backwards. So I will be running for election next term.
Thank you, trustee Frankie. Now your trustee's report, trustee Schmidt.
I'd just like to remind everyone that this Friday is the nineteenth anniversary of the nine eleven attacks on our country. And I would hope that all our citizens here in Elk Grove take a few moments to think about the civilian victims who lost their lives that day and their families. Like to think about the first responders that responded to try to save lives, and especially those first responders who lost their lives and their families. And finally, to remember all our friends in the military who went to fight the war against terrorism, and especially those who gave the ultimate sacrifice and their families. I can't believe it's been nineteen years, though.
Remember we did that, Gary Umoff had a trailer for his bank, Elk Grove Community Bank Trust wasn't open yet, and we did that, coins from the community, coins from the country, raised that money to help out. I remember going over Gary's trailer, trying to count all the coins we raised, his machine like burned out and stuff. So yeah, I mean, it was really amazing. That's what I mean, Elk Grove's unique, trustee Schmidt, we come together.
I remember the most is, you know, we always complain about the airplane noise, but for the three or four days after that, it was so silent in our community because the planes had stopped flying over. It was almost nice to see the planes flying again. That concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Schmidt. Trustee Pracken.
Thank you. Just to remind everybody, we still have the farmer's market going on every Saturday morning from eight AM to one PM, right out here in the parking lot of the village center. This will be going on through October. The corn I bought this Saturday from the market was so good on Labor Day. I mean, the produce is wonderful, there's still plenty of booths and different variety of things, from plantings to food to, wow, just an array of things. Face masks, I bought my face mask there.
Bouquets.
Oh, all the beautiful bouquets of flowers too, that's right. There's just a big variety of things, and it's a wonderful experience. Come out and support your village and get something at the farmer's market every Saturday from eight AM to one PM. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Listner.
Thank you, mayor. I just wanna mention one more thing about the document shredding. I know trustee Feiter will be giving more details, but this is strictly from a personal point of view. I arrived about eight twenty, and I was on Devon down near the Jiffy Loop. And the line started moving about eight twenty-five, and I was watching all the public works and police and village manager staff and cert people and maybe some others, just getting everything moving so quickly. Well, even though I was down at the Jiffy Loop at eight twenty-five or eight twenty, at eight forty-six, I was leaving the premises, I was all done. And considering it wasn't opening till nine, that was pretty good, pretty good timing. So it was really run well, so thank you, Pat, and that concludes what I have.
So they opened early.
They opened early, yeah.
We sponsor. Trustee Zarnik. Before you start, talk about at the farmer's market, as trustee Boxer, everyone goes, kids are having a little fun nowadays, aren't they?
About the swing?
Yeah, Saturdays, friends of mine, we've been kind of doing our coffee clutching at the, well, kinda sitting at the library area, in the grass. We have our chairs socially distanced and masks, but to watch the kids on the swings, well, not just the kids, just about everybody, wanting to take pictures, just enjoying it, it really, it did my heart very warm, because you wonder, you do put something up like that, and you wanna make sure people use it and appreciate it, and I think they do. And that concludes my report.
Still waiting for the first engagement, Mr. Knickerbecker. Trustee Feiter.
Yes, I have a number of things I wanna mention. One of them in the, was last week we had a bike meeting here in Elk Grove Village chaired by Maggie Jablonsky, our assistant village manager, and it was attended by myself and by one of our police officers and by someone from the public works, and two of the leaders of the Friends of Cycling, Dave Simmons and the vice president, Michael Cavallini. It was a good meeting, we went over all the things that have been done in Elk Grove for the bikes. We talked about what's ongoing now, especially the work being done on Beasterfield. And then we talked about future plans and about how we're out looking for grants to get a lot of things done, like a bridge over Claremont and many, many other things, and bike paths under two ninety and things like that. They're all part of a long-range plan, and they'll all come to fruition when we get the grants formed. And so we talked about that, it was a very, very good meeting. Everybody was positive, there were no complaints, and we all left, I think, pretty happy about it, and it was good. And in the future, Maggie is working on getting a way, trying to find a way to get the community involved in the revision of the bike plan, to let the community know, and then to give the community a chance to have input. Now, originally, she wanted to have a public meeting here, where we bring everybody in and they could ask questions. And now again, with the pandemic still raging, she's looking for an alternate way of doing it. And she's working on that, and she'll come up with a plan, because she always does. But it was a real good meeting. When I'm talking about bikes, I wanted to say something real special about Dave Simmons and the Friends of Cycling, what they did. They held a collection of used bikes last weekend at our library. And they were able to collect eighty bikes, they filled a whole truck that they had rented with all these used bikes. And they're all being donated to West Town Bikes in Chicago, who will then take those bikes and they will fix them up so they're really nice, and then give them to needy people. It was a real good thing, again, Elk Grove people coming through and helping others. The, our own dentist, speaking of that, Dr. Holman in Elk Grove Village, did it again. He ran another free dental day for people who can't afford some of the expenses, and it can be very expensive, believe me, I know, going to the dentist. And he ran this all day, that I believe it was Friday, oh, last Friday, and it was a very, very successful thing. There were people out there at five thirty in the morning, he said, when he first arrived, Dr. Holman. And he worked, by the way, with two other dentists and a whole bunch of staff to get through that whole day, because they had people coming in. He thinks they treat it more than eighty people, many of them, most of them were local people, but there were also a few from Chicago and even as far away as the South Side that came for free dental care. And Dr. Holman took care of them, and I thought that was just a terrific thing to do. And Dr. Holman is, he's playing another one. He says they, actually, it was thirty thousand dollars worth of free dental care that was given out that day. Again, I think that's very impressive. One last thing, the Community Character Coalition is going to have a food drop-off drive on October third, Saturday. And it's gonna be all day long, from about nine till two, I think they decided. And it will be two locations, the township on Landmeyer and the new District Fifty-nine Administration Center. And I'll have more information on that at the next meeting. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, trustee Feiter. Last but not least, trustee Jeffrey Charles Frankie.
I thought I wasn't the lone man on the totem pole now, I'm always the last one.
I started as a rookie and I worked my way up.
Ah, see, it always goes this way, doesn't it? Met the kids stable down here.
Kids stable. I like that, kids stable.
I can't, yeah.
That's good, that's good.
I can't believe, I have to say this, but somebody actually asked me what the hours were for Oktoberfest, a week from Friday. So just in case anybody hasn't been listening, Oktoberfest has been canceled, there will not be one. Till next year, we couldn't do it because of the state. So I'm pretty sure it was in all our newsletters and everything else, but there is no Oktoberfest a week from Friday and Saturday, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Move on now to the accounts payable warrant. We have three accounts payable warrant to pay tonight. The first one is for August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty.
I move we pay the accounts payable warrant for August twenty-fifth, twenty twenty in the amount of nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand, thirty-seven dollars and sixty-one cents.
Second.
Motion by trustee Zarnik, second by trustee Listner. Lori, can you call the roll, please?
Trustee Feiter?
Yes.
Trustee Frankie?
Aye.
Trustee Listner?
Aye.
Trustee Pracken?
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt?
Aye.
Trustee Zarnik?
Aye.
Motion passes six to nothing, we have August thirty-first, twenty twenty?
I move we may pay the accounts payable warrant for August thirty-first, twenty twenty in the amount of two million, seventy-two thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars and ten cents.
Second.
Motion by trustee Zarnik, second by trustee Listner. Without objection, record the vote as demonstrated, six to nothing. Finally, we have September eighth, twenty twenty?
I move we pay the accounts payable warrant for September eighth, twenty twenty in the amount of one million, eight hundred and sixteen thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine dollars and forty-four cents.
Second.
Motion by trustee Zarnik, second by trustee Listner. Once again, record the vote as demonstrated, six to nothing. Tonight, we have contingent items, A as in absolute, and S as in socks. Could I have to say, the Chicago White Sox are really playing some good baseball. My tongue didn't even fall off saying that, but I have to admit, they really are. I'm impressed. So I have A through S, can I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion by trustee Frankie, second by trustee Listner. Any trustees have any questions, comments, or staff members on any of the items? Any of the audience here tonight to talk about the contingent items? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll record the vote as demonstrated, six to nothing. Move on now to regular general items, Plan Commission. Mr. Romo, any items for Plan Commission tonight? Okay, move on to the Youth Committee, trustee Jeffrey Charles Frankie.
No report.
Move on then to Business Leaders Forum, trustee Listner.
Thank you. We made four ambassador visits since our last board meeting. One was to Tykables, they make incontinence products, or at least they don't market them, they market them. CR Express, they're a full-service trucking company. Let's see, Irving Press, they're a pretty much a specialty printer. And the last was Green Dollar Bookkeeping and Tax, they're a fairly new company, just a one-person shop, but they're getting started, they're an impressive company as well. In fact, one thing I've noted when we make these visits, the people seem a little surprised to see that elective officials are going to the visits. I think that maybe one of the things that maybe helped us to be one of those top three business parks in the country. And we also get to see how these companies are handling this pandemic, and they're all being very safe. Some have more sophisticated equipment, the way they take temperatures and stuff, and others maybe just wear the mask and do the social distancing. But it's been really a pleasure to see these companies, and they're all very exciting. It's good to see what, so many products we have in this village that, we know what the big companies do, but some of these smaller companies are a bit of surprise. And I also wanna commend trustees Zarnik and trustee Schmidt for giving the extra time, because it takes about an hour and a half, and you throw in a little travel time, and sometimes getting lost because of the signage in the business park, which I'm gonna talk to Ray about later. We really, I'm really pleased that they're able to make those things, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Cable Intelligence Committee, trustee Listner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one item, I think you've seen it on the Status and Information Report, but Comcast did make an agreement with the Cubs, the marquee sports network, to carry their station. And it's what's been going, and it's nice to have the Cub games. This may be a little tough on the Sox fans, because of that, there'll be a slight price increase if you have the digital starter package, or the simple and easy extra package, or simple and easy sports package, and there's a few others. But the increase is about six dollars a month to have the Cubs. And I guess everyone gets it if you have those packages, so that's all I have on cable, and thank you.
Well, they're in first place right now, so even though Matt was mad, Cardinals have less losses, but they are in first place, so maybe we have a Sox Cubs World Series.
It's gonna be interesting to see how they handle these playoffs, because Cubs are gonna be finished, and the Cardinals are gonna be playing for.
Quite a while.
It's gonna look a little like the presidential election, you won't know who wins when the series ends, but.
Very good, thank you. Health Community Services, trustee Zarnik.
I just wanna mention a caring place, our Respite Program that's held at Christus Victor Church has been doing Zoom outreach for its participants to help them keep active and in touch. They're looking forward to be opening once again when it is safe for all. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Information Committee, trustee Listner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you don't mind, let me go back to the Business Leaders Forum for one second. We do have a couple ambassador visits coming up this month, September twenty, I'm sorry, September sixteenth. We're going to the Country Inn and Suites, it should be interesting to hear what they're going through during these pandemic times. And on September twenty-eighth, we're going to a company named Merx Global. Also, today, Enclave restarted their, what do they call that thing? I can't think of the name, but Makers Wanted, yeah, that's it. Anyway, they started, it's still being handled via Zoom. And on the sixteenth of September, their masterclass for September is a presentation by Dr. George Fukicich, I think that's what his name is, but it's rethinking monitoring and being mentored in an era of social distance. So it could be a very interesting topic. I'm interested to see how it's gonna work for the kids going to school, if he's gonna touch on that at all, because I think that's really a problem nowadays for the kids and the teachers. That does conclude my report.
Thank you. Move on now to Recycling Waste Committee, trustee Feiter.
Okay, first of all, I know Mayor Johnson spoke of this, and so did one of the other trustees, but it was a big success having the recycling this past Saturday of paper and electronics. I got there about ten fifteen and sailed through. I didn't have any problems whatsoever. Once you came in, they had two lines, one for the paper or document destruction, and then the other for the electronics. There was a whole crew of people working there that made it work well. You didn't have to get out of your car, you popped your trunk, they came by, took everything out, boom, you're out of there, it's gone, that fast. Maggie Jablonsky was the coordinator of that, she ran that event, it was very efficient. But of course, there were loads of people helping. We had the plea. But of course, there were loads of people helping. Um, we had the police, uh, we had, uh, Public Works. We had, uh, a number of other volunteers that came there that worked throughout that whole thing and make it a big success. I think nine hundred and two was a record for us. And it went the most smoothly of any of past recycling events we've had. So I think people were really happy with it. And of course, you know, we have another one coming up. Next Saturday, we have the paint and we have, um, the motor oil recycling, the same location, Public Works Facility, uh, on Devon between, between nine and twelve. You need to come there and put everything in your trunk you want to get rid of. And I'm sure it'll be as efficiently run as the other one was. And, uh, I got a whole bunch of things because I just moved into a new house and we got a lot of, um, kind of empty, um, or near-empty paint cans we got to get rid of. So, we'll be there. And, uh, it, uh, I encourage anybody that has these in their houses, dispose of them properly. That's a proper way of getting rid of them. And last thing, but I know this is a, a very important thing because people around Elk Grove this week should have gotten this if you're in, uh, single-family homes. It is a, they have a bag, they have an information sheet put out by the company called, um, Waste Zero, and they call it Simple Recycling. And it's for textile recycling. And the program works really well. Elk Grove has gone out before to Goodwill and Salvation Army and ones like that. Try to start such a program. And it really hasn't gone anywhere, but this one came in with a program that's being run at, with now, I think, ten or fifteen of our surrounding suburbs are doing this. And so it must be working well with them because they are keeping it up and going ahead with it. We wanted to get it started in March, but we had to hold off because of the pandemic again. And the way this works is if you get this bag, you fill it up with rags, clothing, belts, wallets, purses, all kinds of things you can put in there. I mean, if you just have old beat-up rags that you don't use for anything else in the house, they actually recycle those into things that are used, um, in gas stations and so forth that the mechanics use to wipe their hands with, those kind of things. They are able to do that. It's really a unique and special thing. It doesn't cost you a penny. You're still free to give any of your donations you want to Wings, Salvation Army, any of these groups. Uh, that's, and it, you know, it doesn't cost you anything. You can do whatever you want with it. But a lot of times people have really old clothes and they think, God, this isn't good. I don't want to bring this to, uh, uh, you know, Salvation Army for a poor family to have. They wouldn't even want to be an insult. Well, throw it in that bag, then put it out on a garbage day. The garb, the garbage guys, when they come by, they won't pick it up, but they'll radio ahead, they got a computer on this, and notify the, um, people that are running this. And they will come by and pick it up. And then they will give you a new bag to use. So it's a good program. And apparently it works very well in a lot of other suburbs around here. And the program comes out of Denver, so it's, I guess they have a national reach with it. And, uh, I think we've gotten, uh, Maggie Jablonsky told me that we have gotten a lot of calls and contacts, questions coming to Elk Grove about this since these would been, uh, have been given out. So she's very excited and hopes that this really goes well. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Um, Parade Committee, trustee Zarnik.
Thank you. Uh, just to make sure, the twenty twenty parade has been ca- canceled, uh, but we look forward to next year. So save your date, September eighteenth, twenty twenty-one. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Personnel Committee, trustee Jeffrey Charles-Frankie.
Well, I like to throw Maggie Jablonsky's name out twelve times just so I could top Pat. That's all I have. No report.
Judiciary Planning, zoning committee, JPZ, trustee Prackno.
No report.
Capital Improvement Committee, trustee Zarnik.
No report.
Airport update, there's no report. We had a meeting, what was that, Ray, about two weeks ago? Two weeks ago, had a meeting and, um, we're working with JDA, we're all on board, spreading the, um, impact throughout the airport region. We're all in agreement that we're going to want the diagonals part of the mix. So everyone has some impact, everyone gets some benefit. And it should go well. Next summer, our concerts are back, right, Mr. Knickerbocker? Chris Daultrey? KC Sunshine Band? Fills in, yep, because we lost Brett Michaels. And we finish up with the classic of classics, one of the top three iconic bands. I already said The Beatles, Rolling Stones, and the third one? Beach Boys, Mike Love. So, we're excited about it, looking forward to it. It'll be here, actually only ten months away now. Going quickly. Special events, we'll wait and let everybody know as it's going on, tree lighting, hopefully in the near future. Nori and the Liquor Commission, report from village manager back there, Mr. Romo. Thank you. Our clerk, I know is going to be a very busy young lady soon. And your report?
The only thing I want to remind everybody is Elk Grove is going to be an early voting site again. And, um, the hours will, it'll begin October nineteenth through November second. The hours are posted on the website, but it's Monday through Friday from eight-thirty until seven PM and Saturday and Sunday from nine to five.
And it's going to be room E, social distance.
Room E so that we can, uh, maintain social distancing and, uh, masks are recommended.
Yep. And they're going to have the early drop-off, the drop-off box too for ballots, right?
There will be, I'm told from the county, there will be a ballot drop box. And ballots can be dropped off at that box at the early voting site, not at village hall counters. It has to be at the early voting site.
Can I, I have a question on that?
Sure.
So if I get in the mail, I, let's say I request a mail-in ballot and it comes to me and I fill it out, instead of mailing it in, I can go over there and drop it in that box. Is that right?
If, if you filled out a mail application for a ballot and the ballot gets mailed to your house, you can bring that to the early voting site. There'll be a ma, a ballot drop box there.
Okay.
Or if you decide to vote, you have to bring that ballot with you to the early voting site, hand it to a judge. They can void it and let you vote at a machine right then and there. But nobody else can void out those ballots. Once the ballot is issued to you, you're flagged in the system that a ballot was mailed to your house. So you have to bring that ballot with you to the early voting site in order to, if you change your mind and want to vote in person.
Oh, so they will let you do that?
They'll let you do it as long as you bring that ballot with and hand it to the judge. And then they can.
That's good to know.
But I can't void it out.
So, we, again, we're emphasizing, do not bring your ballot to the village hall police department. Don't bring it to engineering, finance, administration, police records. Do not, we cannot accept them.
We are not authorized to accept the ballots.
Okay.
I have a real quick question too. We're going to be doing Saturday and Sunday voting, right, starting in the October date?
That's correct.
Great.
We've been doing Saturday, Sunday though. They've been doing that for a while.
Well, I thought Sundays was only toward the end.
No, no, they do it all the day.
No, they've been doing it. But this time we're going to have, we're going to have one entrance in and a separate door to exit so that it's one-way traffic in and out.
So you come in here and go out that side door.
Correct.
So you come in the door by the parking lot and go out the door by Wellington, take the sidewalk back to the parking lot.
Right.
It's going to be busy.
It will be.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Unfinished business, Mr. Knickerbocker, you had a lot there. Check underneath, anything? Of course, that's nothing new. Um, okay, any? Not really. But, uh, any new business items from any trustees tonight? Nope. Okay, public comment period. We got Mr. Petzel there. How you doing, Mr. Petzel?
Excellent, Mr. Mayor.
He looks sharp, doesn't he?
Always.
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 Good job. And I heard you guys had a concert?
Oh, yeah, we did.
How'd it go? Good? Good? So you, the senior center is now open again?
Today.
Okay, so you're open and going. You guys missed it, didn't you? Good. And I'm coming next month, I think, the twenty-seventh? We'll be there. Looking forward to it.
One thing I want to say, everybody in this village, you should be very thankful that this board is going to run again. It's very important. They're experienced, wonderful people. So be sure to, be sure to get out there and vote and do whatever you need to keep this village going.
Thank you, Alan.
Thank you. That's very nice. Thank you. Any, anybody else? Um, I think that's all the people here. Ah, Scotty's here tonight. Look at that, I just recognized that. Ah, he's hiding behind a mask. I wouldn't catch him.
Go figure.
Good to see you, Scotty. Let's see, everyone else is normal? Let's see, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, you said they weren't.
Ray, I mean, Matt, Matt, you can wake up. We're good now.
Well, Pat didn't say his name twelve times.
He's watching the Cardinal game right now. Um, okay, anything else? We'll be back in two weeks. Think about it, since February is the first time we have two meetings a month because March you only had one. You know, one in, uh, April, May, June, July.
Did we have a special one?
So, huh?
Remember we had a special meeting?
Well, we did, yeah.
Yeah, but that was all.
Yeah, well, remember, the young one here remembers.
There's only one young one up here. Trustees Zarnik and Prackno.
You're supposed to, you're younger than me. You're supposed to say that.
We're all young at heart. Okay, I need a, Donato, thank you for sticking around. Appreciate it. And thank you for, uh,
He wants to quit, that's why.
And thank you now for your service to the village. Appreciate it. Okay, we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by trustee Frankie, second by trustee Feiter. Lori, will you please call the roll?
Trustee Feiter?
Yes.
Trustee Frankie?
Aye.
Trustee Listner?
Aye.
Trustee Prackno?
Aye.
Trustee Schmidt?
Aye.
Trustee Zarnik?
Aye.
Donato, are you impressed how well I knew they had Oath of Office by heart? Somebody had to figure out how many hundreds, I've done, not more than that, so we'll see. Okay, motion passes, anything, meeting adjourned.